Welcome to the 258 Wilton Town Meeting. Police stand up, join me in the Pledge of Legits. Would you please join me in a moment of silence for John Jougers, Kay Rodell, Tracy Hewing, and Priscilla Jougers? Thank you. I'm Bill Key, Deputy Moderator, David Egan and I are going to be moderating this meeting. This is your meeting, but there are few rules which you've all heard before, but I'm going to tell you about them again anyways. If you would like to speak, please wait to be recognized and then use the microphone, state your name, before speaking. If you have a motion, it's helpful to write it down so that we can know, we can accurately restate it. If you're prepared comments, the clerk would love to have a copy of them, so they can be reflected in the minutes. We will try to keep all matters on the floor to the main motion and one amendment to it. We will only deal with one amendment at a time. You can make as many amendments as you want, but one at a time. We welcome all non-voters to our meeting. To vote today must be a registered voting. If you are not registered to vote, don't. We don't say anything to non-voters, we don't use badges or stickers to identify voters. So, if you are not a registered voter, please respect the trust we have put in you. Non-voters are not permitted to speak, except for town employees or consultants. And in particular, we will be recognizing Dave Mercier from Underwood Engineering tonight. All comments should be directed to the moderator and shall be civil, no personal attacks.
Everybody have ballots?
We will deal with each warrant only once. If you want the voters to reconsider a vote, you must do so before we move on to the next warrant article. Fair warning, given the volume of material, that means we got a lot of warrants, we are going to be moving quickly, so don't dawdle. Proponents of a warrant need to keep their presentations reasonably short. That means 10 minutes tops. If you can do it in less, that's great. There is coffee and all sorts of snacks for sale in the back. You're welcome to go back anytime, but if you've got conversations to make, take them out outside or into the hall. We also have Clorox lights next to the public microphone. By now you should all have your ballots, because you're going to meet them for the first two warrant articles. If you don't come on up here and just get them now. In order to keep this meeting moving, I'm going to handle warrants number 11 and 12 a little bit different. These are kind of quasi-bond issues, so they need to be done by ballot, and they need to keep the ballot box open for an hour. We will get everyone to vote, but we are going to take up other business, even though you still have time to cash your ballots. The first ballot question is number 11, which deals with stormwater. I'm going to bring it up, we're going to discuss it, and I'm going to try something tricky. I'm going to open up formal voting for warrant article 11. As a matter of courtesy, I'm going to ask you to stay in your chairs until we've also done 12 and one other short matter. Because after 11, I'm going to bring up number 12, which deals with the sewer. We're going to follow the same procedure. We are going to have a short presentation, and then we will invite you up to actually cash your ballots. The reason for this is just so you're coming up here to cash ballots only once. And we'll keep them open for an hour, and come back and take a break at some point and have some fun counting ballots. Everybody pretty clear on what I'm doing? So, we are going to take up warrant article 11 first. Dawn Kamla is going to give you a presentation to explain that MS4 is not a Korean boy band. Just in case you were wondering, she's going to be followed by Dave Mercier from Underwood Engineering, who will explain what the money is going to be used for. So, the formal part of the meeting is to the inhabitants of the town of Wilton, County of Hillsborough, State of New Hampshire, Department of Affairs, where you were told to be a town hall on Tuesday, and we've cast a ballot. So Dawn, did you have a slide with the results? So, the only contestant base on the town side, incumbent Kermit Williams was re-elected in what could only be described as a real close horse race. We thank both candidates for their efforts. Everybody else on the ballot was elected. Many thanks to the supervisors and to all the election workers who put in a really long day. We went through a lot of corral. So, you were notified to appear here tonight, and you're here. So we are now going to move on to warrant article 11. Which is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 gross appropriation for the purpose of performing asset management for the town's stormwater collection system and public works department, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $30,000 of bonds or notes, in accordance with the Provision of the Immiscible Finance Act, R.S.A. 33, and further to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and determine the conditions and rate of interest thereon, and to further authorize the select board to offset a portion of said appropriation by applying clean water state revolving funds. It being understood that repayment of the loan fund will include up to 100% principal forgiveness to the amount of $30,000, and to further appropriate this year's interest payment of $250 on bonds or notes to come from unassigned fund dollars. Passage of this warrant article is contingent upon the town receiving funds from its CWSRF in order to eliminate the need for payment of local principal tax dollars, and further to authorize the select board to take all other action necessary to carry out and complete this project. This requires a two-thirds ballot vote, and this warrant is together with the explanation attached as printed on the warrant. This is recommended by the select board and by the budget committee. May I have a motion? I have a second please. Alright, article 11 has been moved and second, Dawn is now going to tell us about MS4.
Many of you have never heard of MS4. It's quite onerous, it's from the EPA. If you look at the screen, you've got, the MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So M and 4S. EPA loves their acronyms, so hence it's called MS4, very affectionate. So, this came to be back when the Clean Water Act started in '71. And if you remember, or know your history back then, they started targeting all of the industrial businesses, and then they moved into the sewer systems. And in the early 80s, this town received a grant, and we had a new sewer system put in all over town to separate the stormwater and the sewer system. Then EPA, in time, then has brought it down, so we are now into the drainage portion of the Clean Water Act. So, we are considered under the Boston area as the urbanized area. Just fall underneath their guidance, so therefore we fall under EPA's. There are 60 communities in this state, and only 60, that are underneath EPA's guidance business. 16 communities have been granted waivers, and there are three non-traditionals. So that would be UNH, the Vet Hospital, NIH, HSL, and New Hampshire Department of Transportation. So, we have 47 regulated communities. So these are the 16 communities, you notice that Lineboro got out of it. Unfortunately, we tried, and back in 2013, we tried to get out of this. EPA did not grant us any waivers, and we had attorneys and everything involved back then. Basically, once you are in the system and they call you in, you are in for a living. So, we tried. So these are the communities that are now under the EPA, and you'll see that they're all basically in the southeast portion of the state. And a couple more. And you'll see Wilton is on the far western edge of the EPA's. So what they're going to end up doing is going out further and further to the western side of the water. So what we've done, back in 2003, the first EPA permit came out for the towns at that point, and it was followed the 2010 census, and we did not make that threshold, or the 2000 census, I'm sorry. The 2010 census did bring us in under EPA's, and that's why we're now under the 2000, it's actually the 17 permit, but it didn't start until July 1st of 2018. We had funds that we had choose, they were under the Highway Department at the time, so throughout the last few years, we've had, we've been working on this, because in 2013, we knew we were going to be pulled in. So we had been working on this basically since then, in little bits. And we tried to get out at first, and then we tried to work, but the permit didn't come into effect until July 1st of 2018. So we went through our first year, and we had to file the annual report last year. We are now coming up to our second annual report. What we have to do is, I have to stand here before you, so from now on, once a year at town meeting, you will get up, and we will give a brief update for where we stand with the MS4. We need to check that little box. So the MS4 is comprised of many different parts. One of the things, it breaks it down to six, what they call minimum control measures, MCNs. The first MCM is public education. The finest flyers, there's things on the website, and we're also standing here talking to you about different ways that everybody could help to try to minimize our effects. So every drop of rain that comes down, it hits somebody's roof, it's the streets, the town is responsible for all of the streets, the catch basins, any municipal buildings, so the town hall, the police station, the fire station, the highway garage. And you'll find a couple articles further on tonight, and in part, we have to do something because of the MS4. We're really close to the weapons in that particular place. We'll also find that in the budget, underneath the highway, we have broken out the stormwater, what we call stormwater. Michelle, who's the head of the planning and zoning, has now had to take on the stormwater also, she's there to help with that. We've allocated so many hours. We've put her time in some of these street sweeping, and catch basin removal, all underneath that. So some of it was costs that we were already doing, and some of it was a little bit additional cost. But in order to track and to order to know what it is we are spending on it, we decided to create its own little department, so to speak. MCM1 is the public education. MCM2 is public involvement, we'll go into that in a few minutes. MCM3 is illicit discharge and detection elimination. This is the big one. This is where all your monies are going to be spent. This is where all the testing that we have, we're going to have to be doing, we're setting up those parameters now to do that. And one thing we did do is we've joined a coalition group. There are two main ones left in the state now, one in the seacoast, and they have to deal with nitrogen and break day. Thank God we're not over there, because they're really stringent over there. All of our towns basically drain into the Merrimack River. So we're called the Lower Merrimack River Valley Stormwater Coalition. It's a long type of club. That's what we decided on. It was actually the Manchester and the Nashville one back in 2003. But what we do together is we make all of our templates, we help each other. Today we had a meeting, and there were 30 different towns that were there, and even Laconia comes down, even though they are not under the MS4, they come down so that they can learn, because they know that it's going to be more far-reaching. I even had calls from Lebanon, and they are using our templates to help prepare them for all of their workdays we've done. You'll also find for the MCM3 tonight, you'll have two more warrant articles, 11 and 12. Those both can be used under the MS4. We need to be able to map. What the asset management will do is to help us to be able to map what we need, and we're going to have to do it, and hopefully we can get these, because they're levels, and we won't have to pay for it. Otherwise, we're going to be paying for it, and that's expensive. So, like I said, MS4 is far-reaching, and you don't realize how much it's going to be affecting your life. MCM4 and 5 are have to do with construction. A number of years ago, we could already put these into place, so we're actually ahead, we've got to update them with the new regulations, but we're there. And we'll have to do some zoning changes in the next year probably. MCM6 is another big one. That is, we have to create plans for every municipal building. So it's going to be due June 30th this year. And anybody that doesn't have the SWIP plans, you're going to have to make. So that would be for the fire station, for the highway garage, for the fire, police, the transfer station, if they don't have one already, and also, we don't have so much street, so we've got a lot of work ahead, but she has an awful lot of work. So I already said, we can't get out of this permit, we've tried. The public education and outreach part is, actually, can you go back, I did this one. We have to notify, whoops, yeah. So we have to notify these four different groups twice in a five-year permit. So, that's where all the flyers and all the education is going to be drawn out. NHDS, the Department of Environmental Services, has helped us to be able to create this, they've been actually one of our partners in doing this, so thank heaven, because working together, we've found we can save the communities a lot of money. Because we take the same template, and then we adjust it to our own needs in the town. But at least we have a base to start, and we're not all starting from scratch. Plus, the other thing it does is to make all of the communities very similar throughout, so as a contractor's working from one to the other, they can then kind of have a smooth, they don't have to step basically. So, you know, we want to preserve and save our rivers, and they're beautiful, and all of our weapons, and this will hopefully do that, because every time we have a heavy rain, or we have rains, it comes down.
Speak up please.
I'm sorry.
Could you speak up please?
Thank you, I'm sorry. So every time it rains, we have the rain comes down, and it takes all the sediment, all, anything that's in the streets, the sands, the salts, whatever is in the street, and it brings it and puts it into the catch basins, and then it goes directly into the river from there. So that's what we have to try to minimize, is all the contaminants that are getting So public involvement, what you can do, there are different ways you can be involved, so if you have a dog, and you like to, you have to walk him, you need to pick up after them, because anything, their poop ends up going down into the river. You don't want to put any of that into the catch bases, because then it goes directly into the river. So there are over 900 dogs that are licensed in this town, so just that alone, you need to be able to pick up after them, basically. The Girl Scouts have actually been helping, Michelle, and they now have two stations that you can put your leadings in, and we're going to be doing a curb this summer. So this is the Girl Scouts, they were about Christmas, and a little station that they have. So this is under MCM2, other planned activities, things that you can do. Creating rain gardens at your house, be able to have the way you want to go to, that way it would soak in and be treated. Storm drain systems, you have a stenciling day with community planters. With Dawn, is it, yes. So you're going to be doing stenciling the catch basins in town. They're also doing, is that what you said, I think so? But there'll be more things coming up, you can always look on the website, and they'll be having different activities, and hopefully I'll be able to help, because if we don't do our little parts in this, then we have clean water, and the dirtier the water, the more treatment we have to do, and that's when the MCM3 is going to come in, and we're going to end up spending a lot.
Thank you Dawn. I'd say nice to recognize that David Mercier wants to speak this to you, exactly how this money is going to be used. Okay, why don't you come on up here?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. So, I have a very brief presentation, but it's basically to explain this warrant article number 11 that you're going to be voting on, and it's uniquely wrapped into this MS4 permit, because this will fulfill one of the requirements, it's something you need to do anyways, but the beauty is, is that the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is going to give you some funding assistance to get that done. Alright, great. So, as I mentioned, New Hampshire DTS, they feel so strongly about these asset management plans, that they are actually giving out, we'll say, free money for communities to create these programs for water, sewer, and for stormwater. So in this case, we're talking about stormwater. And as I just mentioned, obviously the town would benefit from participating in this program, because this is something you would have to do anyways, so if you can get money to do it rather than paying for yourself, that's a good thing. Another benefit to this is, once you have one of these programs in place, if you have to do work and spend money on these illicit discharges, when you apply for funding in the future, your applications actually score higher, if you can say you have one of these programs in place. Alright, so what is asset management? That's probably what everybody's asking. Well, it's basically a tool, and what it is, it basically consists of a comprehensive map that you would create of your assets, in this case, your stormwater assets. You come up with a inventory that tells you what the age, condition, and criticality of these assets are, and then it allows you to prioritize them and then schedule them for repair and replacement over time. Key components are the map that I mentioned, and an asset inventory. Again, this is going to tell you age, condition, material, you're then going to look at criticality, so now you're looking at if this particular asset fails, how, you know, what is the consequence? If a culvert under Main Street in town fails and the road collapses, obviously that's a huge issue to the entire town, versus if it's a small culvert on a rural dirt road that fails, it only affects a couple homes, not so critical. So again, trying to prioritize where should our monies go first. This also involves doing lifecycle costing, so you figure out, you know, what do we think it's going to cost to refurbish or repair, and how often do we have to do it over the long term? And then that plays into the final piece, which is a long-term funding strategy. So we're literally looking at 50, 100 years, how do we afford to do this? Because all of you are going to be surprised, when you see at the end of this, that you literally have millions of dollars buried tight in the ground, that nobody thinks about, but it's all becoming aged, and if you don't plan this way, and try to kick off a few projects a year over time, if it all fails at once and you've done nothing, it's just unmanageable to try to afford those repairs all at once. Next slide. Alright, so why do we need the warrant article? It's basically as simple as this, the program that New Hampshire DTS has set up that allows you to receive the money, requires that you enter into a loan. Then what they do is, they give you what's referred to as loan principal forgiveness, which is essentially like a grant. When you close the loan at the end of the project, they just write $30,000, up to $30,000 off, and you don't have to pay it back. Next slide. So, the obvious question is, well, what is it going to cost the town? Is it really free? Well, the answer is yes, because we've purposely written the warrant article to be for $30,000, no more than that can be spent, and you know if you get this loan, that that full $30,000 will be forgiven at the end. The one small cost to the town is that as the loans being drawn down, they do charge 1% interest. So you can expect for a project that lasts roughly a year, that you're going to incur something less than $300 in interest. That money is intended to be paid for out of reserve accounts or operating budget, and won't have any impact on your tax rate. Alright, how does this all work? Well, basically, once you've applied for and signed on to this loan, your engineer that you hire to do the work, every month they'll put in an invoice, the town will take that invoice, send it to New Hampshire DTS. They then wire money back to a town account, and then the town pays the engineer. So basically, you know, you don't have to front the money, you just put in that request, the state will release the money from the loan, gets paid. When the work is done at the end, again, you work with them to close out the loan. If you've only spent $30,000, it all gets forgiven, there's nothing left to pay back, you just have to pay that small interest payment for the crew. Alright, I guess I'm already to the end, so that's great. As far as schedule goes, as Dawn mentioned, you guys are a little bit out in front of the curve on the stormwater piece, because the town was already proactive, last June put in what's called pre-application for this loan, and you made the funding list. So, the next steps basically would be, if this passes here tonight, in April you get an engineer onboard, in May, a full application would be submitted, then the state will send back a loan agreement in June, the town sign, it has to go back and be signed by governor and council in July, and by August timeframe, all available work will be in place, and the work can commence. And we predict that the work will take about a year to complete by the end of August 21. So with that, I'd be happy to work with the town and answer the questions, if anybody can take me in.
Is there discussion about 11? Are you ready for the question? People ready to vote? I'm going to read the warrant again. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000, that's a gross appropriation for the purpose of performing asset management for the town's stormwater collection system and public works department, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $30,000 of bonds or notes.
of not more than thirty thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three, and further to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the conditions and the rate of interest thereof, and further to authorize the select board to offset a portion, offset appropriation by applying for the clean water state revolving funds. It being understood that repayment of the loan funds will include up to one hundred percent principal forgiveness in the amount of up to thirty thousand dollars. And further to appropriate this year's interest payment of two hundred and fifty dollars on bonds and notes to come from unsigned fund balance. Passing this warrant article is contingent upon the town receiving funds from the CW SRF in order to eliminate the need for payment of loan principal tax dollars, and further to authorize the select board to take all other actions necessary to complete this project. And this is together with the explanation as printed in the warrant. All in favor of Article unwavering? We're going to have a ballot, but I'm going to ask you not to vote yet. This is going to be the ballot box for number eleven when we get to it. So you're all being very polite, not voting yet, even though the ballot box is open, and by the way, it will be open for at least one hour. Article twelve is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of developing an asset management program for this wastewater collection system that will qualify for a town, excuse me, qualify the town for federal and state funds. Such sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three and second. As amendment, and to authorize the town to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid and participate in the state revolving fund, SRF, RSA four eighty-six fourteen, established for this purpose and to allow the town to expend such monies as may become available from the federal and state governments and pass any vote relating thereto. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to thirty thousand dollars in principal forgiveness with no impact on the user rate or the tax rate, this requires a two-thirds majority vote and is recommended by the selectmen and by the budget committee. Mr. Mercer?
I move, except it's the article twelve.
And second?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Good evening again. So this presentation will be even more brief. This literally, it's a sister warrant article to the one we just heard, the main difference being, obviously, this is to create an asset management plan for your wastewater collection system, sort of the pipes and manholes that bring your wastewater to Milford for treatment. So this is a program that, again, we highly recommend you participate in because similar to the last one, you need to do this program anyways as part of the wastewater permitting that you have through Milford. Milford has a discharge permit with EPA and in the most recent permit, the town of Wilton is now named as a co-permittee, which means you have to follow the same rules as Milford under the permit because your wastewater goes there for treatment and discharge. And that permit requires that you create what's called a C-MOM program, I won't bore you with the acronym, but basically, creating, mapping of your collection system and creating this asset management plan is something you would have to do anyways to comply with that permit. So here's an opportunity for you to participate in this thirty thousand dollar SRF loan, get the principal forgiveness and get the work done for free. Might as well just advance right through. Literally, you know, the slides are all the same, program works exactly the same way, it's just going to be the sewer department this time instead of the town. The major difference here is really the final slide on schedule. And the main difference here is it's going to take a little longer to get this one off the ground because the sewer department did not put in a pre-application to get on the list last June. They'll have to do that this June, so it'll literally be the end of the year before a loan is in place and the work starts or won't finish until December of twenty twenty-one as opposed to August. Thank you. Is there further discussion about Article twelve? Yes, Mr. Pushman? Just state your name, please.
Ralph Pushman, San Jo Road, Wilton. A quick question I have, I'm assuming that if the cost of the particular project goes up to thirty-five thousand, the town's responsible for that five thousand dollars of over?
Let me see, the question is, if we go over, who's responsible? So your question is, what happens if we go over the thirty thousand? Yes. The way the warrant article, warrant article is written limits what the town, or in this case, the sewer department can spend. They cannot spend more than thirty thousand. So if they enter into a contract with an engineer, it would be for thirty thousand. If the engineer spent more money, they can't, they're literally always, it will be locked in thirty thousand.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I, before we move on to this, I would like to offer an amendment to Article twelve, because from what we just heard, the second project will not likely be completed until the end of twenty twenty-one. And under our rules, this money would lapse at the end of twenty, twenty twenty. So I would like to offer an amendment that this will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two seven, number six, and will not lapse until the project is completed or by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, whichever is sooner.
What's the date of this identity?
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. It gives us an extra year just in case.
We should live so long. All right, we've got an amendment on the floor, just to second it. Amendment, who can second it, to make this a non-lapsing appropriation? Is there a discussion on the amendment? Hearing on, are you ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment to make it a non-lapsing appropriation? Passes? Single file by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Okay, ready for the amendment motion? Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of developing an asset management program for the wastewater collection system that will qualify the town for state and federal, federal and state funds. Such sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed thirty thousand dollars under, under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three one, as amendment, and to authorize the town to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid and participate in the state revolving fund, SRF, that's RSA four eighty-six fourteen, established for this purpose, and to allow the town to expend such monies as may become available from the federal and state governments and pass any vote relating thereto. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to thirty thousand dollars in principal forgiveness with no impact on the sewer user rate or tax rate. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation pursuant to RSA thirty-two seven, and will not lapse until the funds are used for December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I've just been informed that the same issue exists with number eleven, and it actually will be completed until the middle of twenty twenty-one?
We've already, we've already dealt with eleven.
We have to vote on it?
It's going to be voted on next, we're done talking about it. So, um... Are we still over discussion? We're discussing twelve, we've done the discussion on twelve. We've done the discussion on twelve. So, and we're ready to, we've read it a second time and we're ready to vote on it. Those of you who've been here, I think it's a pretty experienced crowd, know how to vote our ballots. If you want to vote no, circle the word no, don't tear it. If you want to vote yes, circle the word yes and put that in. We're going to be doing two ballots at once. Article eleven, which is the pink one, is over here, and Article twelve, which is the yellow one, cast your ballots over there. So why don't you go cast your ballots? Please.
It looks like a knee.
I don't have a little one. I have a big one, thank you.
Good, yes, give it to me. Oh, you know, you should.
Do you need a ballot? You're all set, okay. What's your name?
Four, six, five, eight, Mercedes Benz, my friend, four, four, seven, nine, eleven.
And then, make a decision. But stuff like her boyfriend here and other people, they have their production.
Here, moving on to Article thirteen. We will, if people have had a chance to vote, you will have a chance to vote. At least until eight ten. So Article thirteen is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee's recommended sum of five million sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the general municipal operation for the year twenty twenty. This article does not include appropriation contained in the special or individual articles addressed separately. This one requires a majority vote and is recommended by the both budget committee and the selectmen. Someone like to move five million, five million sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars? And someone like to second it? Okay, who would like to discuss it? Mr. Daley? Mr. Hughes? Will you trade us?
Daley is a very tough prosecutor. He just will say no. So I'm Chair Hughes and I am the chair of the budget committee, and I'll try and walk us through this operating budget. As the moderator said, the operating budget is structured by the warrant articles. Mind you, if this is your household, you'd be talking about what you're going to spend on the groceries and how you're going to pay the heating bill and the electric bill and make the driveway work and all that, as opposed to the warrant articles, which are capital expenditures. That's where we buy the equipment that's going to last a while, it's like you buy the refrigerator or stove in the house. Okay, so this is the operating budget, this is what we're going to live on during the course of this year. So, broken out into several areas. I hope you like dessert because we have lots of high charts. First of all, we have, this works, I'll turn this one. We have general government, we have the executive area, two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Top clerk in voter registration, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine. Financial administration, you can track to the books and all of that, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four sixty-seven. Legal expenses are thirty thousand dollars. Benefits, determine, all the benefits that one has to supply to the employees, that's four hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Planning board, budgeted for sixty-nine thousand, forty dollars. zoning board at eleven thousand, four twenty. Government buildings, we can answer those, forty thousand, four sixty-three. It could be that very nice antique of a town hall. And cemetery maintenance, forty-seven thousand, three twenty-five. Property liability insurance, running at forty-two thousand, five. That's the general government pie. Public safety breaks out into several areas. Police department, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Wilton ambulance service, we are one of the towns that contributes to the Wilton ambulance service and our contribution this year will be a hundred and... Our contribution this year will be $170,131. Fire department will be $164,181. Emergency building inspection, $49,501. That's the larger, then squeeze in between communications and emergency management. Building inspection is emergency management, $66.24. Communications, we pay $131,402. That connects us to the service over Milford, so you can tell people about community, all that sort of thing. That's the public safety portion. Limiteded highway, streets, sanitation, and water. So highway maintenance, $559,253. Resurfacing budget for $384,265. As Don said earlier, we're breaking out the NS4 stormwater expenses. They are in this highway budget, so you see, they are separate here. Street lighting at $15,000. The recycling center, again, a multi-town operation. Our contribution to that is $207,150. Health officer, we pay $831. And then we have two departments here. The sewer department, which is $421,644. And that is covered by the ratepayers, the users. Wilton Water Works, $288,463. Again, that is paid for by the ratepayers. That's the highway, street, sanitation, and water part. This did not deserve a pie. These are small donations totaling a grand sum of $24,846. These are things that citizens of the town use. We make a small contribution to offset that. Child advocacy center, Castro Wilton Main Street Association, community center called Health Care, that I found the services, Land Trade, organization known as Bridges, the American Red Cross, and Sanhito Valley Rides, the Blue Yellow Bus. We do not dare to question Milford Regional Council, nor did they get money. And then if we come down on this page as well, if two things aid to disable St. Joseph's, that's the wheels on wheels. And welfare, we put in at $40,757. I found this an interesting discussion in the budget committee. We ended up discussing it two different nights. We only spent $20,000 last year in round numbers. And the question was, well, why would we put in more money? And the economy looks good, everything's fine. But we were reminded by town administrator, you know, if you don't put it in there and the economy doesn't work out so well, and you're going to have more people applying for welfare, you're going to have to spend the money, even if you didn't budget it. Fortunately, we budgeted it. Let's hope we don't have to use it. Now we get to culture and recreation. We have parks and playgrounds, $17,695. Library, $300,073, that's our contribution. Patriot purposes, $2,250. I'm standing here going in my head, that's what we budgeted last year. We didn't spend it. What did we talk about that night? But hopefully you won't ask me any questions on that. The gas park contribution will be $26,250. And Conservation Commission budgeted, as it was last year, $8,735. The last thing that comes under the operating budget is debt service, fire station, that's on the bottom. That's $69,000 we'll have to pay this year. So there we are. Here's an overview of all those put together. You see how they're divided up? Public safety comes to over $1,418,000. Highways, we're spending just over a million. General government, we're spending a million two plus. Debt service, $69,000. Culture, recreation, welfare. That's the overview of the budget. And I think we have one more comparison here, just to take a look at how this looks this year versus last year. You see some of these have come down a bit, they didn't quite as much. Others have gone up a skosh. Keep in mind, under highways and streets, you go, whoop, that bump. That's including that money we're spending on stormwater and NS4 and all of that. So there we are. That's an overview of the budget, and I think that's all that's left, right? So now we have, I'll give you a comparison approved by the budget committee this year, $5,63,388. That's up $174,000. I wish. $174,155, or an increase of 3.56% for expenditures. Mind you, we're not looking at revenues, and this does not include special warrant articles where you may consider spending money for capital projects or company capital expenses. Is that it? So I'll let you read now, hopefully you'll agree on the stage.
Are there any questions? Yes, why?
I do have questions on...
Could you state your name, please?
Abby Dawson. I do have questions on a few lines. Should I list them? I want to take more time.
I'm a slow selling boy. You want to do it one at a time.
Okay, there's just a few that I see increases over both what was budgeted or last year. All right, so the first is finance administration. Financial administration.
Yes, yes. Mr. Town Administrator, I hope you're listening closely. We've had to re-set this year. After the auditors took a look at the books, they asked us to have a second person hired for one year, full-time, to keep an eye on the accounting, to go through things. We had a number of suggestions.
I did read the letter.
You read the letter, so you see where we are?
Oh, yeah.
Here we are. So this is what it's going to cost us.
Okay, that's enough on that one.
All right.
All right, benefits, that's where...
Somebody speak to the benefits package here.
There's $305,000 last year, and now it's supposed to be $450,000.
Change, we added family plans to that, that we didn't have last year.
Say that again?
Those are family health plans that will come aboard, so...
Cemetery maintenance.
I'm sorry, the reason I'm laughing is I practiced this on my government economics class just today morning. And I had the same question from a student. My terrible response, and I hope this town will forgive you for my puns. People are dying to get in there, and we have to keep the place up. So that does look after all the things we have to do with cemeteries. Mowing the grass is just one aspect of it.
My comment, it was over $16,000 spent, and now it's $47,000.
Right, right. I've driven some of the roads in the cemeteries, I'm told. We had a bunch of trees we had to take down.
Okay. I just got a few more. The police department. So it's up about $100,000 from what was spent.
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is that they were understaffed this past year in officers. So they're trying to come back up to the number of officers we had. I said, yes, one more?
Short few officers.
Short?
And also, there's a catch retirement, which is just police at the moment. Is in the police budget now to accurately reflect the cost of...
So for those of you who couldn't hear, the retirement package for the police department, which is separate from the others, goes to the state in a different account. The state raised the amount we had to put into that.
I'm getting it again, okay. Highway maintenance is up quite a bit, and that's plus the stormwater.
Mr. Town... Mr. Town Administrator, sorry. Do more resurfacing this year?
There's a separate line for resurfacing.
There's a separate line for resurfacing, I remember that much. This is a problem with being 111 years old, and then we isn't what he used to be. There were down two people, and we're going to bring it back up this time.
I would like to take this time to say, I think the highway department does a terrific job on my own. Okay, last subject. The sewer and the water are up dramatically from what was spent this year. There's got to be connection.
And there is, Milford, Milford set the rate for the sewer. That's something that's hard for the sewer department to control. I don't know if there's a member of the water commission or the sewer department here that could speak to that. See Mr. Schultz rising behind you, and he could probably answer his question far better than I.
Thank you. Schultz, I'm sorry. Thomas Schultz, Chairman of Wilton Water Commission. The reason that the expenses are always below the amount that we budget is because our building and capital reserves are both water and actually sewer as well. The reason that the amount of the, I want to make sure that you hear me, of the... That works. Trying not to touch it. The reason that it's higher is that we always under, we overbudget and underspend. That's always our goal. And we use the difference to build our capital reserves, both water and now for sewer. And it is all paid for by the users, not by the taxpayers, although there's obviously overlap of both. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, is it?
Thank you. Any other questions, or may I retire the mic?
Dr. Torey, Burton Highway. With the recent reorganization of the ambulance department, is there any cost savings that would, because this would have happened after the budget was prepared?
None that have been brought to our attention since then. One would, we'll just have to see what comes of that.
Karen Arden, 16th interval room. My question is also in the lines to Mr. Toys, regarding the ambulance budget with the recent new hire of the administrative officer, and where the budget is the money for that.
Mr. Town Administrator, I'm sorry? From the revolving fund.
And then how do we, I guess my other question would be is, how is the money in the revolving fund when we, I know for fact that our budget originally was $650,000 and some change, and it's now down to $550,000. So $100,000 is already coming out of the revolving fund to lower the amount of the budget.
So there will be some adjustments in the labor lines, I'm being told by the town administrator. A lot of this happened after the budget was...
Correct, I understand a lot of that. And unfortunately, it doesn't seem like that that was a consideration when this was all done.
Right, I think that, yeah, we were unaware of something like that was in the works at the time. But thank you for your question. Also, thank you for your service. Any other questions? You're in us.
Are you ready for the question? This is more discussion, this is $5,000,000 and change. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee's recommended sum of $5,63,388 for the general municipal operation for the year 2020. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. All in favor of Article 13 is read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
Aye.
Article 13 passes. Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,000 for the purpose of making the third-year lease payment of the seven-year lease approved by the warrant article number 14 at the 2018 town meeting on the highway department's 2019 international 10-wheel dump truck. Money is to come from general taxation or to take any other action relating thereto. This is recommended by both the budget committee and the selectmen. Okay, Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion about Article 14? Mr. Williams?
So this is just to remind you that...